All right, I want to welcome everybody to the November 4th meeting. It is, we're getting a little late start, 6:05 if I can get a approval of the agenda plate.
Motion to approve Chairman.
Second.
All in favor of I? If anyone stands, I'll open us up.
Let it pray. Dear Lord, last Sunday we had a great sermon. A sermon that was about thanks, giving thankful, everything the good Lord gives us. If it's not the people in this room, we thank for being a voice and a concern of this community, to our law enforcement, our firefighters, and men and women that serve us each and every day, we thank you. We thank you so much for the many blessings. Dear Lord, we thank you that you give us the wisdom as the Board of Commissioners to make the right decisions on your behalf. Be with each and every one of us, and again, thank you so much for the ever-living love that you give us each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before I ask Mr. Patrowski to come in, if anybody here tonight is in opposition of any of these requests, you will get opportunity to speak. Mr. Patrowski, you want to start us off?
Chairman, our first item is a request by Austin Meeks. It's a conditionally used to allow an automobile repair shop. This is at 109 Bowen Hill Road, it's Zone C1. Planning Commission recommended approval of this request. I did want to call your attention to the staff report, a couple of recommendations for some potential conditions to place upon this.
Okay. All right, Mr. Meeks, are you here? You want to come forward, introduce yourself, and just give us idea of what you're wanting to do, and if we got any questions, we can ask you.
My name's Austin Meeks, and I'm the one wanting to open up the automotive repair business at 109 Bowen Hill Road. It's Building A, so it's going to be the building on the left side.
Any questions for Mr. Meeks? No questions? Anyone here tonight opposed to this request? Anyone opposed for this request? Commissioner Wood?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to approve at this time, but I'm going to note it. Director Patrowski mentioned about the recommendations in the staff report. I'll read those, that way it's for the record. First recommendation was restrict all outdoor storage to a fully screened rear area with opaque fencing, maintaining the existing black mesh as a minimum standard, and, number two, require all repair activities be conducted in the garage with door down, minimize public visibility. That's in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? Second? Any more discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman, next item is a request by Nathan Kramer and Madeline Ward. It's a conditionally used to allow a dwelling with metal siding. This is at 436 Stage Coach Road, Zoned R1. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. Mr. Hoyt, who is the future father-in-law, has recused himself from the discussion and recommendation.
Okay, is Mr. Kramer, Warren?
My name's Nate Kramer, and I own the property next door to 436. It's a lot, Stage Coach Lot 11 and 12.
Okay.
But I'm wanting to build a like barnumian style home with metal siding. It'll have my wraparound porch, and the way the land is cleared is you won't really be able to see it much from the road. I left a good piece of woods in between the road and where the home will be at.
Any questions from the board? None? Anybody opposed to this? Anyone? This is your district.
Motion to approve Chairman.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Enjoy it.
Thank you.
They're beautiful, those barnumians are beautiful. I've looked at a couple of them.
Chairman, our third item, request by Tyler English. It's a conditionally used to allow a single wide at 292 Harris Morton Road, Zoned Ag 1. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
All right, Mr. English?
Actually, I'm Grandma.
Okay, Grandma?
Yes, Sherri Miller. I made the request for Tyler, he's our grandson.
Sure.
He recently married, so we're deeding him two acres of land on our property, and his other grandmother is going to give him a single wide. She's trying to save him some money because they have a baby on the way.
Mm-hmm.
So we would like for approval.
I started in a single wide 43 years ago.
So did I. Upgraded to a double wide.
Any questions for the board? None? I'm sorry?
You can ask for our position if there's any.
I'm getting ready to. I asked for a question for the board first. Anybody opposed to this? Anyone opposed to this request? This is Wendy.
District 2, Simone.
Oh, yours again. Boy, you're on the road right, aren't you?
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
Second? Any more discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chairman, item four is a request by Sherri Daniel. This is to rezone from RR to Ag 1 with a conditionally used to allow a single wide. This is at 186 Woodward Drive. Planning Commission recommended approval of rezoning up to two acres to the property to Ag 1 for the single wide.
All right, Mr. Daniels, are you here tonight?
Hey. I'm Sherri.
Hey, I'm Dalton, I'm her son. I'm going to buy the family home, and we're going to put her a small little mother-in-law suite out, some smaller, low footprint, so we can landscape around it, make it look nice, and not be so big.
So I'm wanting to downsize from...
Yeah, we're doing the opposite.
Any questions? None from the board, anybody opposed to this tonight? Anyone? Commissioner Kishen? Oh, yes.
Just, are we going to clarify the two acres?
The two acres, yes.
In the motion.
All right, anyone opposed?
Motion to approve with the stipulation that it's the two acres going from RR to Ag 1.
No.
Second.
Second? Any more discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Ayes have it, all right.
Chairman, our last item is not a zoning decision, this is a request for rehearing submitted by Mr. Green in relation to the rezoning that was denied last month. You've been provided a copy of his letter requesting rehearing. Just as a reminder, rehearing does not undo the zoning decision that was made, it simply waives the six-month waiting period
Yep.
that he has to wait before he can reapply for this approval.
It's the handout.
The handout. Mr. Green, you here tonight?
This isn't a public hearing, this is you read the letter, make your decision based on the merits of the letter.
I've got you, I'm sorry about...
Keep it straight, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Tim, has anything changed from the previous hearing?
That's the purpose of the letter that he submitted.
Thank you, just because he went from... So for the purposes of understanding, that corridor was identified as commercial, correct?
Yes, sir.
See, the schoolteacher already did his homework.
So you weren't listening in another part of the meeting?
I had already gathered that information.
Right.
See, it was residential and in-commercial, now they want to make it residential, but it's sitting in that...
Y'all behind it last time.
Yeah, we denied it last time because that was, you know, the long-range plan is that being a commercial corridor.
That is correct.
And this is not the first time we've done this. What's the board want to do?
Chairman, I would argue that we, the denial was not based on a previous denial from three years ago, and that it was initially residential, but that our land use plan does not show that as residential, that's a commercial corridor all the way up the right highway.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second?
Motion for denial.
Motion for denial.
Second.
Second? Any more discussion? Done, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Tim. All right, board appointments. Reappoint Miss Earlene Hamilton to HPC Board for another three-year term.
Has she agreed to accept?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion to approve Chairman, this is an order.
Yes.
Second.
Second? Any discussion?
Just real quickly, I remember at some point, and it may be in the ordinance somewhere, where people are not supposed to serve on multiple boards, and I know Earlene is historic preservation all day long, just want to make sure. We need to check because there's zoning and planning and
Right.
that board. And if that is true, then she'll have to make a decision on...
Okay, we'll check into it. All right. Any more discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. All right. Senator Jenin, approval for the minutes, we had the third Tuesday of October 21st, also along with a work session on October 30th. If y'all had an opportunity to review the minutes, I entertain the motion.
Second.
Second? Any more discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. We have a Mr. Branch, you have to come forward tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for seeing me this evening. We just wanted to point out to the Commission that our roads are beating our cars up, and they creating a hazardous situation when we meet traffic on the road. To pull over to the one side of the road, there's dips in it, potholes. I've run off the road a couple of times with other people that were meeting me on the road. That's on East Colonial Drive, and then on Stage Coach Drive, Stage Coach Drive East, there's a section of that road that's emaciated. We have to drive up on the guy's driveway, the property owner's driveway, to get around most of the bumps, going out and coming in, we have to drive onto the side of the road. It's been ongoing repairs for years, and nothing's been done about it. And we just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention, let you know what's going on, and how we feel about it, and that's the purpose of the petition.
That's a public meeting, and that's what we're here for. Oh, good. Commissioner Kishen, I think this is...
Yes, and I spoke with Jason about it, seeing where it is on the, as far as the Pacer discussion on that, where we are on the list.
So, East Colonial is way down the list, maybe in the 250 range. The other road there
Stage Coach Drive.
Stage Coach East is maybe in the 30s. We're getting relatively close to that, and, but East Colonial is on down the list always.
So what timeframe are we looking at for 30 and 250, or whatever it is?
I hate to hazard a guess on the one in the 250s, but we're in the 20s now, I think. Some of the roads were city roads, some of them were situations where you had just a short piece of asphalt and then a dirt road. So we're getting close, I would say, two to three years on Stage Coach East, and like I said, the other, I hate to hazard a guess on when we might get to that.
Then we need to up the repairs, because it's just, it's dangerous.
And it's all driven by funding, I think. We, you know, we get a certain amount of funding each year from the state, we have to put some local dollars with that to match it, and we go as far down the list as we can.
I understand.
Unfortunately, it's just expensive, and the process that we're having to use on a lot of our roads is called full-depth reclamation. There's really not sufficient base underneath the existing asphalt in a lot of places, and so that process is going to result in a great road, but it's just very expensive, and so it takes a while to...
But that still doesn't do us any good.
Yep.
Right, yeah. So what do we do in the meantime?
We can't pave as many as we used to.
I understand.
I mean, the cost of everything, just, well, anybody knows, the cost of living's gone up, and it's, operation of the county's no different. And so what we used to do five years ago, we're probably doing half of that, am I exaggerating? And because the costs have just gone skyrocketing.
What can happen to make that change?
Well, the greatest thing would be the T-sploss.
They voted it out.
Hopefully it had a pass.
On the ballot, because that's, it's directly related to roads. That's all that can be put up, you know, our parking lot
Right.
that's attached to the road. But that is the biggest thing. But Jason, I know what you're talking about, there are some areas on that road where you literally have to go around because the road's down to the dirt. Is that something we can get?
Get that made work.
And I don't want to keep saying, keep patching it, but for the next, you know, until we get to where that road is going to be paved, and look at some patches, at least, I know of at least two areas, probably
That would certainly help, yeah.
Three areas on that road.
But there are places on East Colonial Drive that there are dips on the sides of the road, and when you pull a small car into a dip doing 30 miles an hour
The problem is, the original base for the road was...
I know, it's just falling apart. I understand.
There's a lot of substandard roads in the county that we're having to deal with now.
Oh, yeah.
That were let go, and it's not a cheap, I think it's cheaper to do them right the first time than it is to come back and fix them.
It certainly is, yeah. I agree. That's all I had.
Hey, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hubbard, are you here? Mr. Hubbard? Nope. All right, old business. You representing Ashley tonight on our rescind the data center? Takes a minute?
Yes, sir. I'm familiar with it, she and I didn't talk about it. Familiar with the issue, it is to, while, to work on the due process to rescind the first one.
Do we need to table it, or?
I think this was, Jason...
Oh, I can talk about it just briefly. Ashley had told me that it would be good for the board to come back and formally rescind that vote. I think that could be implied perhaps from restarting the process, but she thought just out of a running caution, it might be good to formally rescind that previous vote to approve the text amendment.
And the question was whether it was valid anyway, so by rescinding it, you're clearing the slate, so that the process you all have already started can go forward.
Motion to rescind the data center text amendment, Chairman.
Second.
Second? Any more discussion? Commissioner Martin, you got a look on your face.
Yeah, you know, help me understand the why behind it. Because I may have missed that.
The why?
Yeah.
There was some discussion about whether there was a legitimate text amendment to begin with, because of the timeline of advertising, and so the other part was give us the time. There were some things that we put in there, and I'll be the first to say, I felt like planning and zoning was probably rushed from the time we got an application, and we weren't prepared for the zoning ordinances that were in place, or not in place. And so they had to do a yeoman's job in a short amount of time, send it to us. We looked at it in a very short amount of time, and then made some adjustments to it. So that short amount of time gives two things, rescind it and give us an opportunity to make sure that we have everything in there for it. We also voted on the moratorium for data centers, and that would give us the timeline to look at the zoning. And then we subsequently had a, worked, a great work session last week that got some input on some things that were probably needed or to be looked at for this text amendment as well.
Fair enough. All right, any more discussion?
Are y'all approving?
No, hold on, hold on, we're not open for public...
I'll go ahead and make a comment, I think the question was going to be, are we approving anything? No, we're not approving any data centers.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry, I just got to be careful.
This is to rescind the text amendment, so that we can start over getting our protections.
All right, so, I'd be more than happy to let people come up, we're right around the corner from doing that, so...
Mr. Chair, if I may, the moratorium is still in place.
Yes, right, right.
So there are, no applications will be considered
Sure.
while this is going on.
Sure, thank you. Any other comment? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ayes have it. All right, Jason, we got a second reading of the amendment to the purchase order?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is just the second reading, the first reading was done at the last meeting, this will be the second and final approval, and the ordinance will go into effect 10 days from today.
Any questions for Jason? I want to hold that baby, I'm so used to it. Get some help up here. I have a good babysitter, though. Any other questions? What's the board like to do? I need a motion.
Motion to approve the amendment to the purchase and order ordinance as it pertains to local preference.
Second.
Second? Any more discussion? None, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Ayes have it, all right. Begin the text amendment process for elevation of structure-related roads. Mr. Rizner, again?
And this is one that we talked about last time. Tim's here, in case y'all have any hard questions, but basically this is to begin the text amendment process. We're trying to correct the issue of structures being built below the level of the road that causes drainage issues long-term, and so this would simply begin that text amendment process where it goes to planning and zoning, ultimately comes back to you, and that's about all I have. Tim, anything else? You have?
I think it's a great idea, because it's been a lot of this, you know, kind of overlooked over in the recent year, over development, whatnot.
I make a motion for the text amendment process to evaluation of structures of relations to roads.
Second.
Second? All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I am concerned about the long-term impact on, and the hardship that it could cause homeowners who want to build. In my district, you know, in the subdivision that I can see, Clifton Ridge, even Kingshi Village, like, I don't see a need. Hampton Lakes, and a couple of the lots where they squeeze some homes in, I could see there being an issue, but I would like, like zoning and planning should have a say in that, right? And I don't think that they have to get an architectural drawing and do some additional study like that part, and the expense of that, I'm not keen to support it for that reason.
Any more discussion?
You know, it's, Delon, this is something that's been going on many years, we discussed, you know, last meeting, and it's needed because there are certain places in the city where they've been kind of pigeonholed in, and it's, you know, some places they've had to build a concrete wall to protect during certain rain events, and it's, you know, when you get a rain event, and you essentially flood a building up to need a waste deep, and then you displace families and run belongings and all that kind of stuff, we need to reevaluate some places where we build homes, and, you know, some places just don't need to be built in, or it needs to be, you know, modified to, where we'll shed and run water away from those structures.
And I would agree with that, and, you know, I've lived here for 24 years, and in many of the places that I've viewed even as a real estate broker, they've been okay. And then there are some, like even on East Colonial Drive, where there's some low-lying land, right? I bought the 14 acres from the Childs family some years ago, about 20 years ago, to ride dirt bikes on, and they told me, hey, part of it's low-lying. I'm like, we're not going to ride in the rain anyway. We're city. So it's okay. And when Hurricane Katrina came through, I saw that water rushing by, right? Because I'm right after the farms, right, when we crossed that bridge. But when Tim, and we were going to build a house over there years ago before I got elected, and the Army Corps of Engineers said, hey, this is where you need to build that house to be out of the 100-year floodplain. And so the foundation is still out there, and it's above the road, because I was informed, right? They gave me that information. I just don't think that, again, if we made an exemption for, you know, existing subdivisions or, you know, land that obviously clearly doesn't require it, sure. And I don't know how to word that, right? But I think at Tim's discretion, there should be a box, right? If they're applying for the application to build, does, do they need an architectural study to show watershed? Yes, if it's low-lying. And if it's not, then Tim can check off and say, we're good.
Any more discussion?
I see where Delon's coming from, but my fear would be that we're now putting that risk on a judgment call of our director, that without the opportunity to have, you know, the data to prove or disprove that, you know, he's not, he's not taking, you know, any line of sight measurements out there. And if we do get a flood, and somebody says, well, you told me I could build here. Especially if there's grading changes or water flow changes, you know, watershed changes above that house, you really kind of And I think You need to protect yourself. Yeah, I think the amendment talks about when you're building, because, you know, if they dig out 12 inches, and they were level with the road, and they dig out 12 inches in the porous lab, they're lower than what they were, you know, if they come up with the foundation, could create your own problems.
Right. And, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm just, I'm good with making sure that we don't allow somebody to cause a problem that will be a problem.
Yeah.
Don't problem.
And, you know, I'm a fan of Tim, I've been dealing with him since I pulled my first permit in 2003. I think Tim is risk averse, and I know at the end of the day, he's probably going to check the box more out of the caution of covering his butt, right? And that's okay, but if he can go out there and look at Kingshi Village, this lot is at the top of the hill, whether it's going down Kingshi Circle or going down Champion Drive, no, they don't need it, right? And I don't think he has any pause with making that decision. At the bottom of Champion Drive, oh yeah, where all that water collects, he's going to say, nope, you need to get a study to address that. Because he even told me, hey, you need to get a compaction study out on that road, because they just filled, right, part of Graham Road with all the filled dirt. And every neighbor told me about, oh, it's filled with dirt. And I got a compaction study by Geoscience, and I took Tim's recommendation, because I didn't know, and I'm happy that I did, and they said, hey, you're good. And then Floyd came out and did the perk test, and it perked, and people told me it wouldn't perk. I am a fan of protecting people, because I know what it's like to not be protected. Sun Valley, right? Sewer systems, Ruby Drive, right? Because all of those homes on Ruby Drive probably could have used some architectural support that said, hey, you're going to need a retention wall, and you're going to need to move this water someplace. It's just, again, I think in some spaces, it's going to cause an undue hardship on the average home builder. I don't know whether that's going to apply to all homes, it's going to apply to manufactured, because when they go out, right, and they cite their mom's house, well, they have to do the study, but they're before, well, they're after the vote, so they won't. But from now on, everybody that wants to do that has to get the study done.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, all right. All right, move on to Department heads. Chair?
How you doing this evening? Good. I just wanted to thank all the dirt road citizens for being patient with us last week. I know we had that slow rain for those four days, and I had all hands on deck. We were hauling rock, scraping mud off the roads, trying to get them passable, we had some that were pretty rough. I think we got them, still working on them a little bit today, but we got everything back up passable.
That's great.
Appreciate it.
But I appreciate them being patient, and we will be attending that dirt road reclamation in Fayette County tomorrow, so maybe we'll learn something from that.
Appreciate it.
Like how?
Tim, you got anything else tonight? Mr. Rizner?
Legal?
Yes, sir. Citizen comments? Any citizens like to come forward tonight? No citizen like to come forward?
Sheriff calls as good.
No, no, come on. You already started it, you might as well come on. You come up here and meet.
I said, sheriff calls as good.
Everybody good? Well, hey, we love this turnout. We'd love to see this room full every meeting because this is a, uh, a community meeting and it's y'all's meeting. And, uh, you wouldn't believe the number of times we've come here and had one or two people sitting in here and you just say, okay, this is the public meeting and nobody's showing up. And, uh, it's great to see, uh, people here and, uh, blessings about this community because our well-being is, uh, y'all's also. But, uh, Commissioner Kishen, you want to start off on commissioner comment?
I don't, um, thank everybody for, that has voted. Those that have not, you got twenty-five minutes. If you could go ahead and get them in there, that'd be great. So, uh, that is, that is, you're right, you're privileged, you're honored, and everybody should do it. That's all I got.
I'll echo Sam's comments about voting. I mean, it's a city election night, so briefly I'll give congratulations to whoever wins in the city elections because those are very important for the city residents and, um, people need to vote every election.
Great.
All right, that's all I have.
Ms. Follin?
I will say what Ms. Pitts was saying, um, the new sheriff's cars that they're putting out on the road look great. The new uniforms look sharp. I mean, they could have found somebody other than Douglas to be the model on that, but, um, the uniforms look great. That's for you, Travis. Um, tomorrow night at the Jones County High School football field is Field of Faith. Um, it is put on by FCA Fellowship of Christian, um, Athlete, Athletes. Um, if you've never been, it is very moving. Kids get up there and give their testimonies, um, to bring more students to Christ. Uh, it, it is worth the time, even if it's cold. Wear some warm clothes and just watch. It starts at six.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, thank you. Five-thirty to eight, huh?
Starts at six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
It starts, oh, gates open at five-thirty, it starts.
Okay, I knew.
It's gonna be food trucks.
Yeah, so it'll be all kind of activities too, so it's very worthwhile. Um, also keep, um, Clay Wiggins' family in your prayers. He fought a hard battle with cancer. He leaves behind, um, a wife and very small kids that, um, won't have that memory of their dad. But, um, we need to make sure we keep that alive for them because Clay was a great guy. He was, um, an investigator with our DA's office here. Um, he was investigator for the state of Georgia's DAs. Is that right? All right? It, he was the state of Georgia, um.
Investigator of the year.
Investigator of the year. Um, he worked for the Sheriff's Department for many years before going to the DA's office. So, just, um, pray for his family and their children.
Commissioner Martin?
Um, echo everyone. Uh, Sam made a very good point. Go vote. Um, roads are something serious and, you know, while we can't advocate per se for splosh, that's the fastest way to get it done. And it, when your road's down at two-hundred or your road's down at four-sixty-five, it, it seems a little bleak. But all of these funds, um, trickle to our citizens. And we've always been a good steward of resources to make sure those things happen. Um, and resources get where they need to go. And this is a weird thing. Um, River North has a tax allocation district for water and sewer, right? And what that means is the citizens inside of River North pay an extra tax for, um, their infrastructure, the water sewer, to ensure that it runs and operates and gets repaired appropriately. Um, and nobody wants to talk taxes. We have always rolled taxes back. Um, but something to consider, um, is a tax allocation district for roads, right? If, um, an area wanted to do that, and I don't know how narrow or how finite we can be. Um, so let's say a subdivision wanted to do it, other than River North, because that's pretty obvious. It's sectioned off. But wanted to do that because they wanted to improve their roads, um, they could create that space. We could do county-wide tax allocation districts, but again, that implies that the county is urging you all to, to, um, pay an additional tax. But that would speed up the process. Um, we're hoping that's the teesplosh passed. But if it doesn't, consider some of those tools that we have available, um, to hurry along or speed up the roads process. Because if my road was six-hundred, it'll be a long, long time. My grandchildren, my great-great-great-great-grandchildren might get to see that road get paved. So, just think about those things. Um, the data center, um, rescinding the text amendment, I get that. Um, and, and I, I know I missed the meeting because I was out of town. Um, I want us to all think about what type of businesses we want to attract. And I know I said this before, um, but data centers have been clean and they have been known to be revenue generating. Um, and if someone could show you that the data center would replace the revenue stream that the county collection household taxes, and we told you, you wouldn't have any household taxes. It might shed a different light. Not promising that, not saying that that's real, but go look at, um, data centers and look at the revenue that they bring into the counties. And then think about our budget, and then you may have a different view. And hopefully it goes into the industrial park and all goes well. Um, with our city partner, city election, um, I hope that they, we elect, um, some good individuals to help strengthen the partnership between city and county, um, and to move the city in the direction that it needs to go. Um, Benny Gray was, was a, a good friend, um, and, um, left a long legacy. And I hope that whomever gets elected next in those positions, think about the work that has to be done for all of the people of the city and continues a, a long legacy of serving people. I rest, sir.
You're good. All right. We get a motion to adjourn and go into executive session for personnel, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming. If you're not on our email list, get on our email list so you can keep up with all the ongoings with the county.